All three of you are here if you want to rock and roll. The first thing is that you have Dennis here to discuss the possibility of postponing town meeting again. Right now, it's currently scheduled for July 11th. My recommendation to Dennis and the board is that Dennis postpone it or recess it again to August 1st. That's an arbitrary date. I do, I have no expectation that we'd be meeting on July 1st. I don't expect the state budget.
August 1st.
Pardon?
August 1st.
Right. August 1st. Um, I don't see the state budget being approved by then, and we'll probably have to bump it again. Um, but you know, I didn't want to pick August 8th because someone's going to think that I'm trying to um, schedule the town meeting against the Silver Lake graduation and that, again, even August 8th, we wouldn't be ready. So, but just to avoid that argument, I want, I'm recommending we go with August 1st.
You need a motion?
Oh, no, Dennis.
Dennis, that's right, Dennis.
I'm proposing, I guess, and, and the only thing I would add is that the week following the 8th, my family and I are still planning unless they're closing the borders to go to Ireland to visit our, our daughter and our grand, our oldest grandchild who will turn one on the 14th of August. But again, that's kind of, kind of in limbo. So the 1st is fine if, and, and I think it's likely, given what we're, we're seeing, that it may be postponed again because of the state budget, but also I think of concern for the logistics of what we're trying to do. So I, I just think it's prudent and I would make a motion, uh, unless they were, and I want to hear any input from the selectmen. I, I'm assuming that you folks have talked or the, the health agent has made it clear their concerns. Um, you know, I just think for a lot of reasons, it's a good idea to wait until we get more information and we're farther along in the process, you know?
It sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm on board.
You got me in there.
So the, what Dennis would be saying is, I, Dennis Carmen being the town moderator for the town Halifax, in consultation with the board of health agent and board of selectmen for the town Halifax, and in accordance, now where is it?
Oh, I had it too far away.
In accordance with the authority vested me by chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, hereby declare the annual town meeting and special town meeting for the town of Halifax previously called pursuant to warrant to take place on June 15th, 2020, and then recessed July 11th, 2020. So we recessed again and continue to 9:00 AM on Saturday, August 1st, 2020, and will take place at the Halifax Elementary School. Yeah. Are you in agreement with that, Dennis?
Absolutely. Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Charlie, did you give Dennis an update on where you think that the, um, the state budget process is going to be timeline wise?
Yeah, I indicated to Dennis already that I expected two more postponements, one either the 22nd or 29th of August, and then the, from there to September 12th. The assumption being that, um, we should, I hope, have a state budget by the end of August, and then we're, we, that, we'll have to wait for that, but at the same time, we need to get tax bills out by October 1st. And on a practical matter, September 12th is about as late as we can do it to send out actual rather than estimated tax bills.
Charlie, you said end of August. You mean into July or is it going to take too much?
I think it's going to take two months. That's what I'm hearing, that the state is not going to be ready. I mean, we're already, let's put it this way, we're already on July 2nd. It's, you know, we have no message from the governor, you know, providing a revised budget, nothing from the house or senate. I don't see them getting it done, um, this month. So Dennis, is that a go?
Yeah, for me, it's a go. I, I, and if you need me to formally, I, I'd say what, what you said, and I can repeat that if you'd like, but basically, I, I think it's appropriate to, to do it at this rate. And as you say, I, I fully expect there to be several additional extensions of it. So I just, you know, for safety, the fact that we don't have the information we need to make decisions, and I just think we need some time, so.
And so what we'll do, Dennis, I'll invite you by at some point next week to come by and sign the same type of documents, so it's in the file.
Sure.
But what you're doing today is just what is needed, so we're good.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Well, I thank, I thank the board for its in continuous service throughout these difficult times, and everybody really are doing a great part. And, uh, you know, it's just, it's, it's challenging, right? You know? But, uh, I appreciate all the, the long hours and many conversations I'm sure you're having with a lot of anxious town people, you know, what's going on. So thank you for all of that. Anything else needed from me, or you guys got other things to meet on?
Yes.
Okay.
Happy 4th of July.
Thank you. Safe, safe and happy 4th to everybody.
You too, Dennis. Take care of yourself.
All right. Charlie, did you need anything else? Did you say or no?
I'll set Dennis. Thank you.
All right, folks, carry on, and I mean that in the most positive way. Take care all.
Thanks. Bye bye.
Great day, Dennis.
Um, the agenda officially says 1:45 for the discussion on Grill 58, so I think we need to wait a few minutes in case there's any member of the public that wants to attend the meeting, that we'd be making sure that they be there for the discussion. The chiefs are here and our new, uh, board of health agent is here. I didn't know if any of them had any COVID related matters to discuss.
Um, the only COVID matter was a, um, a case came in this morning from Maven. It's not a test positive. It was just a contact, um, case. So I did notify both the police and fire chief of that, and I'll be monitoring Maven myself this weekend, so I'll keep you abreast of the situation. At least we learned about a new street in town.
Yeah, Willow is not exactly the most well-known. You're correct.
Well, I like to learn something every day.
So I've just about, to, what would happen with the contact? Would the contact person be straight, um, tested at some point?
They, they have the option to.
Okay.
Right now, they, they just know that they were around somebody, um, and it was reportable that way. So if they want to test to make sure, otherwise they've been given the precautionary measures by the VNA, um, to stay home and isolate, so they could opt either or.
Right. Okay. We'll just have to stay tuned. Um, for the best in this case, I think it's been, what, roughly three weeks at least since we had a positive case in Halifax, so it'd be nice to continue that, but we'll see what happens.
We got back our test results for the two ponds. So you'll be happy to know 4th of July, both ponds are open.
Yay.
Great levels. Um, East zero and West very, very large.
Chiefs, anything?
Um, just the grant we received through assistance to firefighters. It was roughly 11,000, little under $11,000. It's for a light, um, and UV lighting system. And Charlie, there was a, there was a $500 match on that, that I, I asked the question yesterday, and the FEMA grant rep wasn't 100% sure. They thought we could use Kansas back money as the matching funds, but they weren't 100% positive on that.
Well, I would say we apply for it. You, you know, um, you know, once we've spent the money, um, you know, then, uh, city will have the bill, you can put it up saying we, you know, we got this amount. I'm making the numbers up. Let's say it's $12,000, 11.5 is from the grant, 500 from us. We'd like to be reimbursed the 500, and we see what happens.
Okay. Sounds good. That's all I have.
I, I had a question about the UV lights. So we were talking about that at the school committee yesterday. Does the UV light have to actually touch every surface in order to clean?
My understanding, I'm, I'm far from an expert on them, um, is that if you have surfaces such as underneath a stretcher or something like that, if the light doesn't hit it, potentially things will be all, would, would still, um, that area would still be contaminated. Chief, I don't know if you've heard the same?
Yeah, I, I think the, um, it almost works in the same thing as like a flashlight. So if you, you know, run a flashlight across a room, and if that light doesn't hit a certain area, whether it be, you know, behind like a stretcher, like your, Chief Ferris mentioned, or like, uh, you know, under a desk or something, that, that, uh, still be contaminated.
So the, the question was whether or not if we purchased those, would somebody have to actually manually move the light around to get underneath the kids' desks or the chairs, all the surfaces that the kids are more than likely to touch throughout?
Yep. Uh, I'm not 100% sure. I, I'm going to look, we, we, we kind of have a quote on one, and we used the high number when we applied for the grant. So we, we don't have, you know, we haven't really decided, I think, on one particular product, or, um, you know, I think, I think we still have to do a little bit more research on it, but we, that's something we have, next week, we plan on working on that, and I, I should be able to give you some more information as to what exactly needs to be done. And it's kind of on the same idea, I would, almost, the fogging might be a little bit better, but it's the same thing. If we fog the back of the ambulance, it, I don't know how well it gets underneath the stretcher and in those hit, you know, you're still going to have hidden spaces to some extent.
Okay.
More of a gross on, I would say.
Because there were questions brought up over the, um, the chemical and the residue that would be left in the classrooms, and do we still have to go back and wipe down every surface after it's fogged? And if that's the case, we better off just using Clarks wipes everywhere.
Yeah, maybe we could check, I, I could talk to Scott, and we could talk to the, um, the distributor for the, for the chemical that they're using for the fogging and get some clarification on that.
Okay.
With most of their sanitizers, um, once you wipe them, then they're basically rendered intact. Um, at least in the food establishments, it's designed to stay on and be non-toxic once dried. Um, so you just might want to ask that question.
Great. We'll do. Bob, thank you.
And then I can give you an update on, there's going to be multiple meetings for re-entry into the school, and I was elected chair yesterday of the school committee, so I-
Congrats.
Yeah, thank you.
What are you doing? Andrew, do you know what this is? There you are.
Deborah, hi. We're still-
How you doing?
Your mic's on, Deborah.
Can you hear me?
No, we're not, we're not at your point of, of meeting yet.
Okay. How much more time do you need?
Well, it'll probably be in the next minute or two. Gordon's talked about the school system for a couple minute or two.
Okay, great.
So, um, there's going to be a task force. So if you guys have any concerns about the opening of school, I guess I'm going to reach out to everybody and bring your concerns in, so that we don't have 50 people. So once I have a preliminary plan, I'm going to share it with the group.
Gordon, is the task force made up of school committee people?
So a one school committee member, one parent, uh, I believe the president of the teachers' union, school principal, um, a behaviorist, um, and either Jill or Ryan, and then two other people. So there'll be subcommittees for each elementary school, basically, and then a larger group for Silver Lake. And basically try to get everyone to agree to the same main points, but where we're different in the towns, um, just like the, the bus drop off, if, you know, if we're doing bus drops off, or it's going to be more parent drop off, then we might change the configuration of where the buses go for the drop off, you know, points like that.
Anything else, Gordon?
Um, no, that's the update I have for right now.
So Deborah, we're, we're ready to talk about Grill 58.
Okay, let me.
There you are.
Okay. How are we? Dave's here. He's somewhere in here.
There we are. So could you give the board just a very, um, a synopsis of what you're planning on doing? Just to backtrack for anybody in our studio audience, uh, under the state, new state laws, on a temporary basis, the cities and towns can vote to extend the premises for restaurants and such to serve alcohol, um, so that they can be serving it outdoors even if they normally aren't doing that. Um, and, but it does need to go through the board's selectmen for the alcohol license, and then the restaurant owners need to be working with a building inspector and fire chief on fire code and building inspect, inspection. For instance, if they have tents or something like that, they need to comply with code. Then also the board of health, both in terms of the protocols, the normal food safety protocols, but also the COVID protocols. So this is just one step for any restaurant or any facility such as Grill 58 to be able to serve outside. But in this case, the board selectmen handles alcohol, so the, the feed has an application before the board to extend the premises out to, if you're facing the restaurant from Montpota Street to the left-hand side of the parking lot, or more the left-hand side of the building, let's put it that way, where the restaurant's located. You can take it from there.
So, um, we've purchased a 20 by 32 tent, has sides, screens. Fight department was there this morning, and they okayed the location of it, and they okayed the tent itself, that it was, that it was fireproof.
He didn't look at the, I haven't given him the certificate yet.
Okay. Well, we, we just have to present with the certificate, but we have, we have that. Our plan is to, to make everything compliant inside six feet apart, we're going to have to remove six tables. So the tent is more than big enough to space those six tables evenly outside. We're not looking to get extra seating, we're just looking to be at full capacity. Um, we're going to lose the seating at the bar, but, um, you know, until, until we get the okay on that, um, you know, that's really all we plan to do. Um, I, you know, as far as-
Still cooking outside.
Yeah, there's not going to be any cooking, there's no, you know, no smoking outside, you know, we're not really, we're just looking to keep those extra tables so that we can get our full staff back in. But more than, more than that, there's really nothing else. I mean, um, they'll be out, you know, they'll, you know, there's, you know, I, I understand like the alcohol being outside, but we don't really have that clientele that I think is going to throw a beer up their sleeve and, and leave the, the parking lot. I don't think we're going to run into any of that kind of problem, and there'll be, there'll be people out there, you know, keeping an eye on everything that's going on out there, but, um, for the most part, I don't think this is going to be a problem for us. It's going to be pretty short term anyways, you know, but-
That's it.
You know, we spoke with the landlord, Joe Tonello, um, you know, about, uh, you know, coming in and going out of the building, you know, where it would be best for us, and they, I guess they spoke with the fight department this morning over that. So, uh, other than that, um, we're, we're good to go, and, you know, I'll talk to the board of health and make sure that, you know, I have all the, all the information that I need to, for sanitation and, and, uh, and all of that, but other than that, I, I, you know, we should be, be able to go within the next, we're hoping for the, the 20th, you know, looking for the 20th, you know, so that we can, we just had pest control come in, we had, uh, we just had somebody come in and they just, my, my kitchen looks like a hospital, so they've, they've come in and they're going through the whole building, and, um, uh, you know, other than that, we're, we're, we're going to be good to go in a couple weeks. So if you have any questions for me, um, I'll answer them as best as I can.
The board, if the board has questions at this point, and then we have the two chiefs and the board of health agent on call two, but why don't we start?
Okay.
Did we determine where the tables are going to go, Deb?
Dave, Tom.
I already submitted a thing to the chief, Tom.
Oh, okay. I hadn't seen it, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, I submitted a whole plan, uh, just not to scale, but pretty close.
Okay.
And I, this morning, he liked the area it was in, so.
I'm, I'm assuming it's on the left side of the building? Would that be correct?
Yes.
Yeah. That's the obvious place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We actually have a side area we can go in and out of.
With the door there, right. Yeah.
Yep.
Tom, I was out there this morning, I had a whole plan with Dave. He's still going to have those handicap spots available. Uh, he has the Jersey barriers that you fill with water, um, are all going to protect the area. I don't see any issues with it being interfering with the fire department connection or the access to the sprinkler room. Um, so, you know, in the, in the tent, um, was fine, and so everything on my end looked good.
It's actually a pretty good spot. I, I think as far as spots go, it doesn't get too much better when you're ad-hoc-ing something.
Yeah. Yeah, big difference than down in Plymouth, you know, they're out in the middle of the streets.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Where you can easily jump a curb, although they have barriers up down there now, but.
Do they?
So they're going to be barriers around that whole tent?
No, I think, uh-
Yes, Gordon. There's going to be barriers on the three sides.
Okay.
Does the board have any other questions? Does the, do the chiefs or Bob Glary or new board of health agent have any comments or questions?
Hello, I'm Bob, I'm new, took Kathy's position. Um, I'm here to help you reopen from a food safety standpoint, so much like when you first opened your restaurant. We'll do a full walkthrough, and I'll make sure that, um, not only are you COVID ready, but from a food safety standpoint, um, that everybody's all set in there. So if you need me before opening, I'm certainly available to, to, um, help walk you or your staff who might have forgot something, um, in the last few months, uh, through any parts of that, um, process.
Okay. I'll probably make an appointment with you just so that I can get a, um, kind of a bucket list of what I got to get done and make sure that everything's done, because I don't want to keep going back and forth. Just want it to be done once.
Will certainly make your life easier.
Thank you. I don't know, my life has been pretty easy for the last three months.
I've heard nothing but good things.
I don't know.
I think you guys are going to get mobbed as soon as you open.
Yes.
Uh, you know, it's funny, I, you know, as soon as I put up there that, you know, that, you know, somebody asked me, and I said, you know what, I got to put it up on the website. It was just like my, I, I spent one whole day just answering emails. It was just crazy.
But the tavern, we're probably not going to look to open up until, um, we get the
B, because not, you know, most, the majority of my business over there is the bar, so it's just, you know, we'll see what's going on with the grill, and then we just want to take that first step, and then, uh, we'll, we'll move on to the, the tavern. But, um, I don't even know if I would do outdoor seating over there. I think I would, I think I would just, uh, wait till I can open, you know, appropriately with the bar and, and seating, so I don't know. I, I don't have any idea, you know, I, I just got back to Massachusetts, so I don't have any idea when, um, you know, when they're going to allow seating at the bar again.
That's going to be a tougher venue to place tables outside, that, that's going to be a tough one.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be hard, that would be, that'd be a lot harder, so. I think I lost.
Well, I've moved, we, on a request, to move the liquor license to the outside for a temporary period of time.
I'll second that if you need a second.
Yeah, it will be till November 1st.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, well.
Call it a favor.
Yeah.
Hi. I have a question about people's out front, the waiting area.
I have one more question before I, I take off. Um, I have benches outside that were along the front of the building.
So we don't have indoor waiting.
So that I don't have indoor waiting, will it, would it be possible for my guests to bring a drink outside, or is that?
You need to extend it that far. If you want, if you want to be serving food or alcohol outside of what the board just said, which was the tent, you need to, and do it now to extend in essence, think of it, you know, as a boundary line of, of where you'll be able to serve food and/or alcohol. So if you're going to extend it to, call it the sidewalk in front of the restaurant, you need to ask the board that, what you're doing, but then the board's going to need to revise what it just did and extend its boundary to that.
Okay.
And also, um, you know, and I, you, I, I understand you're not in full control of your patrons, but they do need to know that, you know, if, if the board approves this, and they say, fine, you can sit on the bench and have a beer or something, they can't be walking around the parking lot.
Right.
I mean, they have to be on the tent, or they're going to need to be on the sidewalk.
Right. Right. I just, my concern is, you know, is just people being inside waiting. I'd rather than be, I'd rather than be outside waiting.
Well, yeah, perfectly understandable, but, so if the board wants to honor that request, the board should have another motion and vote.
Okay.
So I was just going to ask a question. Is there a-
We should-
-to extend your, um, barrier area there?
Sidewalk.
So, because to, to block off the sidewalk, so nobody walks beyond whatever spot you guys asked for?
Well, it'd be on the, it'd be on the front of the building, so it wouldn't be in the tented area, but it would be under the cover of the, um, you know, and on the sidewalk, and I'm sure that, you know, we're not going to go more than so many, you know, feet of a couple benches, just to, do you know what I mean? Just to, I don't want people, I don't want people down in front of the, you know, I don't want them, you know, walking as far down as where the, um, what is he called? The, um-
Chiropractor.
The chiropractor is, you know, I don't want to go, I don't want him going down that far, but if I, if I put three benches out front, then, you know, I'll limit it to that area.
Yeah, I think you need to put some kind of demarcation out there so that people understand that they can't keep walking around.
Okay.
Because just seeing the sidewalk makes it all the way down to Joe's, and we don't want to do that.
Exactly. No, I'll make it, I'll make, whatever I have to do, I'll make it very clear that, you know, that's a, there's a boundary. If I need to put, I don't know if it's, I don't, I mean, by putting a, a barrier up, is that not something that you can do because-
Even something on the sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
Even, even something on the sidewalk, you know, I don't mean painted, but anything, you know, tape or something.
Yes. Right.
Well, if you roped it off, that, that, because when we talked about, uh, another restaurant, we had them keep it inside the fenced-in area, so if you had some, um, up to the elementary school, we had the road cones that had the bars that slid through.
Yep.
You could-
Something on that order is fine.
Okay.
Nothing that's a trick hazard, but, you know, something that they can visibly see easily.
Right. Okay. No, we'll make sure it looks nice, but, um, you know, and then, and then it's, that it's clear, you know, that, that, that's a, there's no, you can't go beyond that point, but, um, like I said, there'll be somebody outside anyways, keep an eye on what's going on out there anyways.
Yeah, you might want to think about putting some type of signage up saying, no liquor pass to this point.
I, I lost you there for a second.
Some type of signage, which says that you can't take liquor past a certain point?
Yeah, we can do that.
Sure, I'll do that.
Yeah, that's easy enough.
I'll second Troy's motion to modify our previous vote.
Tom, go ahead, call for it.
Oh, that's right, I forgot. Ha, it's me. It's been so long, I forgot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got cheated too. I'm going to get 11 months. I'm just saying.
Well, is that bad or good?
I don't know yet. I'll let you know in a few months.
Um, so I think we're set with you, Deborah.
Okay, great.
I'm looking forward to having it open, and your, your, your ads, Gordon and everybody else mentioned you're going to be jammed, so.
Uh, I, let's hope so. It'll be nice to get back to some kind of normal.
Yeah.
All right, everybody. Well, thank you very much.
What's your definition of normal?
Uh, chiefs, Bob, board, anything else for today?
Good.
So, Tom, make it out. Somebody pick it out.
Say again?
So we- So we move to adjourn?
Yes, I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good Fourth of July, guys.
Thank you.